All right, welcome. It is the first day of April in two thousand and twenty-five. This is the meeting of the UNA County Board of County Commissioners. We're in the large conference room at the UNA County Courthouse. And it's three o'clock, so we're gonna get started. First off, let me explain, we did have a fire alarm earlier, and it was an April Fool's joke. Not really, but that's what Facilities is trying to claim it as. It was them and their sanding.
Kinda like the weather out there, huh?
Yeah. Think you want to see how many of us are gonna go out there? We all thought about it. All right, Deanna and Ibergs got the prayer today, and Matt Grazer is the pledge. Matt's doing both. Thanks, Matt.
Dear my Father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful to be gathered here. We're grateful for all the many blessings that we enjoy here in our part of the world. We ask you to please bless those that serve and protect us. Bless them that will be safe and watched over and be able to return to their families. We ask you to please be with our Christianers this day and that they might be able to make good decisions for our children.
Hey, man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your dual duty. Before going any further, a couple announcements. Number one, put it on silent, turn it off, whatever. I don't want it ringing, and I really got mine both today on the right channel. If you haven't, before you leave, make sure you sign in for us, please. All right, now, moving right along, we have the approval of the minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty-five meeting and March twenty-sixth, twenty-five work session.
I've reviewed those minutes, and I would make a motion to approve those two minutes as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Call for a vote?
Aye.
All right. All right. Before Mike goes any further, honest to goodness, there's no April Fool's jokes today. Okay? Yeah, I work with some people I get really questionable about that. All right, Mike, approval of the warrants, please.
Hey, I have warrants from March twenty-eighth. Let me put my glasses on here. For four million, four hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. There was a one very large check on this one. It is to the Central Canal for three million, nine hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents, which will be held until we receive the federal funds. There's also the annual dues to U-Bag in the amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred and two. Everything else was just the normal bills.
Sorry, Mike, I was behind. What date and amount was that, one more time?
March twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Four million, four hundred forty-six thousand, six forty-seven, seventy-two.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Making a motion to approve?
I would make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
No tax matters? Okay. Okay, no tax matters today. Okay, Carson, Dinosaur Roundup Rodeo.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll keep the memo of no April Fool's jokes today. My name is Carson Young. I now currently serve as the president of Vernal's Dinosaur Roundup Rodeo, and I'm here to request continued sponsorship for our event, which will be held June twelfth through the fourteenth on Father's Day weekend. Just a few highlights from last year. We had five hundred and eighty-eight professional contestants enter our rodeo in twenty-four. That was down about eighty from the prior year, most of that being breakaway roping contestants. We were able to fill all the spots in our roughsock events. We had a great spectator attendance from multiple countries in Europe and the United States. We were about five hundred and fifty seats from selling out on Thursday night, and then Friday and Saturday, we sold out again. And so we had a very successful year last year, and we look forward to continuing that momentum this year. One other great highlight from two thousand and twenty-four is the UNA Basin was well-represented at the National Finals Rodeo, with Dean Thompson from Altamont winning the bareback riding, both the NFR title and the world title. Josh Frost winning both the world title and the NFR title, and then Cash Rob winning the steer wrestling NFR title. So we appreciate the county support with the parade we did back in December in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, and we're hoping to do some special recognitions this year at our rodeo as well. Just a few highlights for this year's rodeo. We'll be bringing back the Western Airs. They're a riding group from Colorado. They'll be doing a pre-show and our grand entry this year, and then we'll welcome back John Payne, the One-Arm Bandit, who's been the PRCA Specialty Act of the Year fifteen times. And then we'll be bringing back Cody Sosby, who's been an NFR barrelman and Comedy Act of the Year as our rodeo clown and barrelman this year. And then Dusty Tuckness and Weston Rikowski will be our bullfighters. So we've got the best of the best entertainment coming to this year's rodeo, as well as the top PRCA contestants. Because of that, our rodeo will be broadcast once again, I believe for the fifth straight year, on the Cowboy Channel and the Cowboy Channel app. Because of this, we're part of the PRCA Playoff Series, and I'd like to just talk briefly about that really quickly. This year, we were asked to increase our prize money by about thirty-eight thousand dollars this year in order to remain a televised event and stay on the PRCA Playoff Series. If you rewind the clock about fifteen years ago in two thousand and nine, we were the largest rodeo in the state of Utah in terms of prize money provided by the committee. And, you know, the world has drastically changed in fifteen years. That's probably a huge understatement, but we're still one of the top rodeos in Utah, but many of our other cities are putting up more prize money than we are. And so to stay relevant, that's why we've increased our prize money this year. I included Elko, Nevada here as a comparison because they've always been at a similar time, even when we had our July rodeo. But last year, they were in July, and for the reasons that we changed, they didn't have as many contestants show up to their rodeo. So they've actually moved to June, the same time we are. And so in order to... They got dropped from the tour this year, and we're still on it, I think in part to our date change. And so as part of today's ask, you know, the past few years, UNA County has donated twenty-five thousand dollars to our event. A few years ago, you know, during two thousand and twenty, we'll count that an anomaly year, but in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen and prior, UNA County donated thirty-two thousand dollars to this event. And so today, I would like to ask, if possible, for a thirty-two thousand dollar donation. But whatever is donated, we're more than appreciative. We're super grateful for the commission's support, both through the monetary donation and with everything the county does for us at Western Park and through the Sheriff's Department. So with that, I'll open the table to any questions from the commission or the public.
Any questions, comments, statements?
Yeah, I got a couple. The Salt Lake one, I'm assuming that's Days of Forty-Seven?
Days of Forty-Seven, that's correct.
That's massive. That's big.
Yeah.
So with the... There's always people standing around, not in seats, but I understand that there is no ticket sales for standing room. Is that still the case?
That's correct. We... All seats are reserved so that we can keep an accurate head count, and we can fit the maximum people in the facility as possible.
That's due to fire or whichever restrictions?
Yeah. We ran into this issue prior to COVID in two thousand and nineteen. We had sold, I believe the capacity was about forty-six hundred that year, and we had sold forty-four hundred tickets. We weren't to capacity yet, but people couldn't find seats. And that's, you know, due to people taking extra seats, you know, front and back, and we couldn't have enough seats for people. And so that was one of the reasons that we moved to all reserved seating.
Okay. You have any questions?
I don't.
No, I just had a question about the money, how you requested the thirty-two versus what we are doing right now. I'm not sure what the reason was for lowering it, but I do know with other things, of course, we've been sponsoring 4H and other type things like that. A lot of what we do is we hope that the event will be able to become self-sustaining. And I know in past years, you've increased and broadened and tried to do more to make it a better rodeo, to make it more desirable. Have you ever looked at just trying to make it work to be more self-sustaining?
Yes, so as part of the increased prize money that we'll be paying out this year, we will be raising ticket prices on Friday and Saturday. We'll do two dollars each night, so that's about eight thousand dollars of the thirty-eight thousand that we're needing to come up with. Last year, we increased our sponsor prices for our shoot and event sponsors to help bridge that gap as well. This year, we'll be working to get more gold, silver, and bronze sponsors to help bridge that gap as well. You know, if we're able to get the twenty-five thousand dollar sponsorship, that will be fantastic, and we'll keep working. It was just an ask that we had, you know, knowing what was donated about ten years ago, and just to see if we could get back to that level.
Do we wanna table this until we can get with our accountant?
I would say, you know, in checking, that we have budgeted for the twenty-five thousand. I don't know that we have any more than that. If you want to table it and run the numbers, I think you could do that. Other than that, I think we need to stick with the twenty-five thousand until... And ask you to... I mean, I appreciate it. I appreciate what you're doing, but, you know, that's what we have budgeted for, I believe. So if you wanna look for more funds, then...
Well, I guess I'm gonna, if it's all right with you two, throw it on his shoulders. We won't give you less than twenty-five thousand, 'cause that we budgeted.
Okay.
We may be able to give you more, but we may not. I just don't know right now.
And that's perfectly fine. And, you know, if that's something, you know, if we could, you know, get the twenty-five thousand donation today, and then maybe in a month, you know, we can have time to research it.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we make the donation to the Dinosaur Roundup Rodeo in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars as presented by Carson Young.
Do we have to call it a sponsorship instead of a donation? I knew we had something about that one time.
Yes, due to the Doug Short case many years ago, this has to be a sponsorship.
Okay. So what do I need to change there?
You amended it from a donation to a sponsorship.
Thank you. I meant to.
Yes.
Okay. All righty. With that in mind, I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Carson, we start our budgeting in August. I would suggest that you submit a letter to Mr. Wilkins on anything you'd like to change, and we'll see if we can work it into the budget.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much for your support. We sincerely appreciate it.
Attorney Anderson.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm going to handle this, but there are representatives from the various offices out there who are... Will be impacted by this, so if they wanna jump in, please feel free. Ordinance three nine dash nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-five oh one talks about amending our fee schedule. This has not been amended for... Since last summer, and these four departments asking for increases or changes are different departments than last year who asked for changes. So I'm going to just quickly read through some of these changes. We have first the landfill. House Bill fifty-three was passed this year. The governor signed it, which requires landfills to put a five-dollar increase on unsecured loads and then save that money, send it to the state. Right, right. Send it to the state for an anti-littering campaign. And I'm seeing back there, Mr. Jensen, who is correcting me, saying it was a ten-dollar increase with that money going to the state. So the landfill is asking to increase their prices for unsecured loads only. Right now, a secured load is five dollars, and an unsecured load is double that, so that would be ten dollars plus the ten-dollar fee. So with each of these impacted prices for those with roll-off containers or just regular vehicles with unsecured loads, it would be a double the amount, the regular amount, plus the ten-dollar fees. That would be the change for the landfill. The library has also made some changes. They have gone through and they have created what's a card for non-residents, and that will... The price of that for a year, a month, various months, it depends on how long that person asks for that. There's also prices, a price increase for lost materials, and I believe some copy changes. If I could jump back to the landfill, the landfill changes will be after May seventh. The library changes will be immediately. I think that's gone through the library board, and they have approved of those. The Recorder's Office is also asking for some changes, and these will take place July or June first, I believe. Yeah, they'll be effective June first. Mainly, these are changes to do with maps. The cost, the increase of costs of producing those maps has increased, so the price will reflect that, as well as for internet fees for those who download files from the Recorder's Office. There's a change in those prices. And then finally, the weed department. Now, the weed department is kind of a different animal. What these are are reimbursements for people who you go out and buy, who go out and buy materials and use them. They can get a reimbursement from the weed department because they can get them cheaper. The weed department actually saves money by giving a reimbursement. They have had this reimbursement in place before, but they have just increased this reimbursement to a fifty dollars or a hundred dollar increments. We have looked through these, and the attorney's office is fine with these increases. We think that they are appropriate. This has been on the work session two weeks ago, and so we would just present this amendment to the fee schedule as we've spoken with... As we've spoken about for your signature.
Anything further?
Nothing for me, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, comments?
I'd just say, there's been a lot of work put into this from a lot of people in trying to be cognizant of the public, but also of the county and the rising costs, and it's not easy to do, but I think it was pretty much a consensus that we need to do this. The one from the landfill is not optional. It's driven by legislature, so...
And if I can point out, the landfill has not increased their prices for years. This is the first time in over twenty years.
May I, Commissioner, make a comment? That is true on the landfill. The landfill is doing fine right where they're at, 'cause the usage is good, but I wanna make sure that this is a unsecured load or uncovered, whatever it is, 'cause it seems like any time the county even thinks about raising our fees, our tipping fees, the local hauler's triplet. So we need to make sure that this is completely understood. This is uncovered or unsecured loads. That is all that's being raised, and that's a state fee that'll go on to the state.
Correct.
Anything else?
Nope.
Go for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero-three dash one-nine dash two zero-two-five oh one to the landfill fee schedule as presented by Lauren Anderson.
Or just be the fee schedule, 'cause it takes other departments in there.
Oh, yes, fee schedule, 'cause there is four. I just... All four of them.
Okay, or whatever it says.
Yeah.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Ms. Simper, Children's Justice Center, CJC update with Taylor Hammack.
We have a forty-five-minute presentation that we have compiled for you guys. Just kidding. John was like, keep it fast.
She gotcha.
No, because she's in trouble now. I said, no April Fool today.
April Fools, I don't think I could compile forty-five minutes. We don't really have much to announce. We have... We are finally fully staffed. That is the best thing that we have to announce right now. We just added Shayna Bird to our team as our administrative assistant. Her role is vital in keeping things running smoothly, data tracking and data entry for statistic purposes and funding purposes. She's also now tasked with assisting with financial documentation and tracking and reporting and keeping me on track. So everyone wish her well, and we're really excited to have her on board.
Did you bring her with you?
Right here.
Well, I think she ought to stand up and introduce herself, then.
This is Shayna?
Isn't that the rule?
What's that?
Isn't that the rule? You're supposed to bring them by so we can visit with them, see how they're doing?
Tell you all the things that they know. So the past few months have been a smidgen hectic as we have compiled and applied for our federal grant, VOCA. It was a tedious process and one that I was not as familiar with in certain areas, but we got it done, and I'm hoping to have a award package with what I requested, but I don't know. Tentatively, we'll have information around June. This year, I did request just a little bit more because in past years, we've had a pilot project that funded mental health, and we didn't have access to that anymore. So we are hoping to kind of bridge that gap with our federal funders. Our federal funding request will pay for or support the salary for our victim service coordinator, who will get up here and talk in just a minute, with accounting covering thirty percent of that cost in... By way of benefits. And then our clinical coordinator will be one hundred percent funded by VOCA, and then the remainder is for our mental health program that we use. And we use that for trauma therapy for the children that we have come to the center and their family members with... That have been impacted by child abuse and trauma. In addition to the VOCA grant, our state grant will be renewing in June as well, and I am relatively new to that process as well. So as it starts to unfold and I get information, I will be sure to let you guys know as quickly as I can. That's kind of all I have for you guys. Sorry it wasn't forty-five minutes. We really appreciate county support, and I will turn it over to Taylor and Elsha, kind of introduce themselves and let you know what they do.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, any questions for me?
No, usually you've brought, like, data that shows that that's what she's gonna present?
Yes, so part of our requirements and promise to our federal funders is that we implement more of the employees that they are funding in that. So that's what we're doing.
Perfect.
But I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any follow-up.
Thank you. Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, update. Taylor?
Hi, my name is...
Song and dance time.
Okay, my name is Taylor Hammack, and I'm the Victim Services Coordinator at the Children's Justice Center. So my job is basically to support the child abuse victims and their families that come into the center. So a few ways that I help the families and the kids that come in is explaining the investigation process in more simple terms for them, to give them a better understanding and take away any fear that they might have about the investigation or the justice process, and then to answer any questions and just kind of help them out throughout the process. I assist with the child protective order process, so I help families understand what a child protective order is, and then I help walk them through what to expect in the hearings and guide them through the actual protective order, and then just making sure that they feel prepared for the hearings. I offer insight and trauma-informed explanations of the forensic medical exams that we have at the Children's Justice Center to help families know what to expect and why they can be beneficial or necessary for the kids that come in. I connect them with critical resources, so that can be things like counseling or victim compensation, or just helping them figure out what their next steps are in the process. When it's needed, I can provide emergency funds for food, shelter, or any other urgent needs to help ensure that these families are safe and supported. I maintain and strengthen relationships with local partnering agencies that provide these resources that we give to the families. That way, I can ensure to connect the victims with the help that they need in the community. And then I strive to be the person that they can turn to during this difficult time. If they have a million questions, I'm there to help answer them, or if they just need to know that someone is on their side, I'm there to help support them. So I only have stats from this past quarter, but in the past quarter, I've assisted one hundred and forty-two child abuse victims and then seventy-one non-offending family members, and I've provided a total of seven hundred and three services. These numbers represent the children and families affected by the impact of child abuse, and I make an effort to do all I can to help these families through prevention and education. Thank you.
That's all you do?
Hi, I'm Elsha Lance. I'm the clinical coordinator for the CJC. I serve as the information and referral hub between CJC and Kodiak Counseling Center. My role ensures victims and families are quickly assessed and connected to trauma therapy. I also track services and funds for the CJC Mental Health Program, ensuring resources are used effectively to support those in need. Over the last quarter, two hundred and eleven trauma therapy sessions were screened and referred for families impacted by abuse and trauma, helping children and caregivers begin the healing process. Beyond therapy referrals, I also focus on public awareness and education. In the last quarter, I organized, advertised, and assisted with twelve parent and child/teen classes, providing resources and tools to help families stay safe. As April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, we are spreading awareness through multiple platforms with social media being our strongest tool for engagement. We're also working with a family... We're trying to work... Sorry, we are working to finalize a family activity with Diana Landboll. That includes child abuse education, and as we solidify that plan, we will share more details on that. Another key part of my role is conducting quality assurance callback surveys. Um, another key part of my role is conducting quality assurance callback surveys with families we've served. Their feedback helps us refine best practices, ensure the highest quality of care for families in Uinta and Daggett Counties. The services and resources I provide go beyond responding to trauma. They strengthen families, build resilience and promote prevention. By ensuring victims receive timely therapy, gathering meaningful feedback and educating the community, we are working together to create a safer, healthier Uinta County. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you.
Any questions for the program?
Excuse me?
Do you guys have any follow-up questions or anything you need from us?
About two hours' worth.
Please, no.
I will make a statement though. Um, I've been here since I actually invoked the VOKA and the CJC as a law enforcement officer and they have been nothing but outstanding. They've taken kids who have been through a traumatic experience. They've taken the kids' parents who are even worse off because they weren't able to protect their child, which we all know, we can't be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with our kid at our hip. And they have been able to get these families back to realization that no, it was not their fault, help them through the process, the criminal process, and in sometimes the civil process. And as we have seen more and more on TV, unfortunately, we're seeing more and more people being involved in this type of nonsense. So thank you very much for what you do and your report. It was excellent. I really appreciate all of you. And most importantly, our new lady. Do you have a doctor to prescribe your Valium? Because that's what's going to take dealing with Angie. So. You two are on your own, you know that, you've been there too long. But thank you very much, appreciate what you do. Can't give you enough, uh, thanks and praises for what you do. All right, see y'all. Matt?
All right, good afternoon. Matt Kazeer with, uh, Community Development. Uh, we've got a few things on the agenda today. First of all, I just refer everybody back to last Wednesday's meeting, March twenty-sixth, um, for all the details on these rezones. I'll go through them quickly today. Uh, the first one is a rezone for Barbara Stavropoulos. Sorry, I'm, I just missed that name a little bit. Uh, requesting a rezone from RA one to R one. Let's see, I'm sorry. Uh, from RA one to C one or C two, uh, commercial, uh, property located at twenty-three oh eight and twenty-three hundred east highway forty. Um, serial numbers are zero six, zero five zero, zero one five one and zero one five two. Uh, this item did go before the planning commission at a public hearing. Uh, there were no members of the public that commented during the public hearing. And the planning commission did recommend that this be approved, uh, to change the zoning from RA one to C two. And that was a unanimous vote, vote by the planning commission.
C one or C two?
C two.
C two, yeah.
C two?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, I think I messed up when I sent the stuff down to Taylor there.
You're right. Okay, any further discussion on this one?
So what this does is allow the landowner more flexibility, not restrictions?
Right. Um, so the RA one is a residential agricultural zone, so allows for a lot of residential and agricultural uses. Um, where this is along highway forty and in the area of other commercial, uh, C two properties, um, she's looking to develop, you know, have options with the property, so.
If there's not any further discussion, I would make a motion to approve the rezone for, well, the rezone that Matt has just presented.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next one.
Okay, um, next one we have, uh, Quentin Murray requesting to rezone, uh, property from RA one to R one. Uh, the property is forty-six south, twenty-five hundred west. Again, it's two serial numbers, uh, zero four, uh, one twenty-four, zero zero two nine and zero zero three zero. Um, again, this went before the planning commission. Uh, they held a public hearing. There was one comment from the public, uh, they didn't want to see high density or commercial on the property. And after the public hearing, the planning commission recommended, uh, to change the zoning on the, uh, eastern, uh, front portion of the property, um, to change that to R one and leave the back portion, the larger portion as RA one, uh, so that he could still have animal rights and things like that on the back property.
And that was unanimous?
Yes, that was also a unanimous vote.
Did the, uh, Mazor Water get involved in this one? Is that their water provider right there?
Um, let's see, so they're south, I don't know. Uh, this is right on the boundary of Ashley Valley and Mazor Water. Um, so I don't, I don't know, the, if, if he does subdivide it, whoever the water provider is will have to, um, show that they have a, a connection for them to be able to build on.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions, comments?
No.
Call for a vote? Uh, my mail motion?
I'd make the motion to change the, these two properties as presented by Matt Kazeer from RA one to R one.
Is that right or is it RA one?
Does that include, are you talking just the, the easternmost part of the property, the front piece there?
Is R one.
Could we say approve the recommendation of the planning commission? How's that?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from the planning commission in moving from RA one to R one on the, this properties described by Matt Kazeer as presented.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next one gets just a bit more, we're getting more complicated as we go down, so. Okay, Timberline Rentals requesting a rezone from MG one to RA one on property located at thirty-six forty-nine north, twenty-five hundred west, uh, serial number zero three zero nine four zero zero two one. Um, on this one, they're not requesting the whole property, just some lots along the road frontage. Um, so planning commission, uh, had a public hearing on this one as well. There were no comments from the public. And so planning commission recommended that, um, the rezone be approved, but we gave, we give him twelve months, um, to get it figured out with Mazor Water on how many lots he can have. And then, um, basically you would get the subdivision done and approved within that twelve-month period. And then we know, once that minor subdivision is approved, we know what the boundary of that is, but it would be along the existing, uh, roads in the area.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I'll make this motion that we approve this rezone as has been presented. Let Matt?
Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, awarding request or proposal, Rock Point Cemetery Expansion.
Wow, and you're already making her come up and do this.
Go, go big or go home, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Trina Gardner with the Purchasing and Grants Department. We've been working with Jess and James with facilities and the cemetery department. James came to us, um, with the need to expand the Rock Point Cemetery, which included irrig, the irrigation system upgrades, ground preparation, hydro seeding and tree planting. So we put out an RFP and it was posted on March twelfth and then it closed on March twenty-first. And we ended up getting two respondents on that and they both were local companies, um, Stubbs and Stubbs and Allred's Landscaping. So then we had a three-panel evaluation committee look at those and judge them accordingly to the RFP requirements. And then, um, the committee did find, um, Stubbs and Stubbs did not meet the mandatory minimum requirement set forth in the RFP, so they did not score that bid. Allred's Landscaping came in with a low bid at ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and sixteen and Stubbs and Stubbs came in at one hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight. So the evaluation committee recommends awarding this RFP to Allred's Landscaping.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the award request, uh, for the award request proposal for Rock Point Cemetery Expansion as presented by Trina Gardner.
And I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Karen. Can Do Crew Library Contract, Karen England Library.
Good afternoon. Um, the Can Do Crew is a group of students from Uinta High School who have special needs and they have been, um, coming to our library Monday through Thursday during the school year to provide basic janitorial services. It's a great opportunity for these kids to learn skills and to gain a little bit of an income. Um, they are a great group of kids and we would really like to continue this contract with Uinta School District. Lauren has seen the contract. Any questions or comments about that?
No, just probably the amount. Do you know what the amount is?
Do you have that? I don't actually have the contract with me.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the year or the nine months that they, they do it.
This is a great program, gives the kids something to do.
They're great kids.
Outside, a safe environment and, you know, add value to the community. I think it's wonderful.
Yes.
I'm glad to see that.
We just need approval from, um, Commissioner Larson and then, uh, Mike Wilkins will need to send it. The Uinta School District has requested that they receive the original signed document. And that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did I call for a motion?
Not yet. I, I was going to make one.
Right ahead, please.
I would make a motion that we approve the contract with the Can Do, Can Do Crew as has been presented.
And I would call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will now be in recess for the Municipal Building Authority. And Commissioner Norton is the chair of that committee.
Welcome. We're in the MVA now, municipal building authority. Thank you for introducing that. Um, we have been asked to transfer some property and so I just wanted to explain a little bit about what has happened here. Um, when Northeastern Counseling wanted to build their current main building, um, they could not apply for the funding that we were able to get through the county. So we worked with them to apply as the applicant for the funding. And then it was basically a pass-through that they went ahead and were able to build the building there on the property. And the agreement was when the loan was paid off, that they would make a request to the county to turn it over to them. So that request has been made and that is what we would like to do today, is make a motion, if I could, have someone make a motion to allow us to transfer the property to Northeastern Counseling through a quick claim deed. It will actually go to Tri-County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Local Authority. Oh, and if I didn't say, the loan has been paid in full and so everything is paid off.
And Uinta County did not, in, you know, expend any money on this. It was all, everything was paid for by the Northeastern Counseling.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton, if I may add, according to the agreement, um, section twelve of the agreement, once Tri-County Health, Mental Health did pay that off, they could request this, uh, property be given back to them. And we did agree to that when we signed this agreement years ago.
Thank you. So I would.
I would make a motion.
Thank you.
That we transfer the property on a quick claim.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Pretty straightforward, according to the contract we went over.
Yes, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you. And that's all the business we have for the Municipal Building Authority, so I would adjourn the Municipal Building Authority back to the regular commission meeting.
Okay, we're back to the regular commission meeting now. Amendments to Policy four fifty, sixty, employee benefits. Ms. Tanya?
Hi, Tanya Craven, Human Resources. So we have made a few changes to the LTD section of Policy four sixty.
Which LTD?
Oh, Long-Term Disability, sorry. I don't know why it's hot. Oh, there it comes, okay. All right, so we've gone back and forth. The main, um, conversation has been about the timeline and, um, a few other little critiques. But I have did, went back a little and did some research after our last meeting where we had discussed the two years and then also talking with some departments about some concerns that they had about the two-year extension of time and whatnot. And, uh, with my research, I found that within the state of Utah, that it typically takes six to eight months, um, to process these claims. And, um, that does also include an appeal process. And so I did, um, put in a one-year maximum of leave with the LTD to satisfy the timeline that it would take, uh, which is shown for the state of Utah, um, for the, allow those employees to be able to work through the LTD process if they were working towards the SS, SSI, the Social Security, um, income. And so that's shown in, um, section A. And then the rest of those, um, paragraphs are things that we had already gone over and established. There also, Commissioner Larson, I did want to note this as well, uh, spoke with me today and we did add Medicaid on there, uh, right after Medicare, just because it is not considered a, um, a marketplace, um, plan either. So we wanted to just clarify that, that it's not a group coverage. So since it's also a medic, a government, if someone were to become eligible for that, he thought it would be a good idea just to cover that and add that to the policy. And I thought that was a good idea as well, so that's Medicare or Medicaid, um, just as a dot of the eye, just as an in case clause to that. Um, otherwise, the other information is all been on there and have been available for review and the information regarding the, um, payments and the timelines of payment and that if someone is on this plan, they do have a fifteen-day grace period to make their benefit payments and they would receive written notice from either the clerk's office or HR. We would need to work that out probably, the clerk's office, since they're the ones receiving the payment, um, to let them know that we're still missing the payment before the termination of benefit would happen. So that's what I have for the LTD, Long-Term Disability.
Is there another part to this?
Um, there is. So we, or I also have, since we were working towards the URS opt-in section and that would happen in July, when Mike takes, when we do the, um, change of percentages for URS, I just thought since we were working on the, the, um, policy, though, I'd just go ahead and put that policy in, or that section into the policy and we could address it now. And that would take effect on July one, twenty twenty-five with that, the amounts that we discussed. And then we wouldn't have to come back again and then add it into policy. It's here, but obviously not taking effect until July first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and that deals with, uh?
The URS opt, auto opt-in. Where the employee has the opportunity to also opt out, you know, they go in and make that decision as well. And that would be, um, uh, very well explained to them during their process when we're bringing them in and going through their benefits.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
I'd just say, you know, we did have some questions this morning. It looks like, you know, you've worked hard today and got those questions resolved and this, uh, these changes reflect that, so thank you for your work.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Okay, call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend, uh, amend Policy four sixty LTD as I'll make a motion to amend Policy four sixty, LTD as presented by Tanya Craven.
That was a little more than LTD.
Well, just the Policy four sixty as a whole.
Four sixty, yes. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
All right, Mr. Wilken?
Commissioners, this is in agreement with Spring Buck, B-U-K. I have sent it to Lauren, he's reviewed it. This allows, this company does, I'm going to read their statement. It's a business associate agreement that established, established the business relationship between us and Spring Buck, authorizing forms for Meritane and Kroger Pharmacy that enable him to work on our behalf with Spring Buck and receive and ingest our data from each entity. So in a nutshell, they go and look at our claims, our Kroger, our pharmacies and stuff, and make sure that we're trying to get the best buck for the dollar as part of the self-insurance, self-funded insurance. But I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware and that you approve it to be signed. So if with that, that's what I present to you. And if Lauren, if you have anything else to add to it after reading through it?
Just that we did receive this, had no idea what they were talking about, so.
Yeah, so we reached out to them saying, what is this? And that's their explanation.
And they will work with GBS. They will, we have to sign with them because we have to send them the information. And that information is controlled by HIPAA.
Correct.
So it's very, you know, it's secured information that they will use to get these for us. So that's why it's coming in front of the.
They can't get it without us allowing them to get that information.
And another note we found out is that it does not cost us anything.
Yeah, it doesn't cost, there's nothing costs. It just allows them to see our information and do their analysis on it.
Correct.
Right, there is no fee.
So our obligation is to basically give them that information, and they will use that. And of course HIPAA applies. There's lots of things that can happen if somehow that is violated. And then we can't use that information for anything else. We can only use it for, to give to them. We can't use it for any other employee-related matters. That information is protected.
All right, and this has been made, this function's been made with the assistance of HR also. I think that's a nice way of putting it, approval, whatever you want to say.
Yeah.
Since HR handles our insurance. So I would call for a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the agreement with Spring Buck, Inc. to provide the self-funded health insurance analytics. So we provide the information that they'll need to do that.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anyone like to make a public comment today? Okay. Seeing no one stepping forward. We will be in closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property when public discussion of the transaction would disclose the appraisal or estimated value of the property under consideration or prevent the public body from completing the transaction on the best possible terms. This closed session will be in the small conference room next door.
Yes, I have, I have a personal privilege to ask. I have a personal matter I need to tend to for just a few minutes. And I'm wondering if we could possibly, can we wait till like four-thirty?
I was going to say, he's got another appointment he's got to go be at by four-thirty. So we will adjourn then until four-thirty.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and on the end of our.
I think we need a motion to go into closed session.
At the end of it, we will adjourn.
Yes, I think we have to have a motion.
So make a motion.
I would make the motion that we go into closed session for the purposes as stated by Chair Larson.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank y'all.
Sorry.